All right, would you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, tonight is Monday, August 27th. It is 8:00 PM. This is the regularly scheduled town council meeting. All members of council except for Ms. Lepelis, who is absent this evening, and Ms. Martin, I understand, is en route but stuck in traffic. So hopefully she'll be able to make it this evening. Mr. Kellogg is also present this evening. Are there any comments or requests relative to the consent count? Seeing none, I'll pass the consent counter as pointed. We have communications A through Q. I would ask that those be incorporated verbatim into the minutes, met and clear. Moving on to public participation. Are there any members of the public who wish to participate at this time? Going once, going twice, okay. Seeing none, I will close the first public participation session. We have one appointment this evening. That's Elizabeth Edgerton, Mr. Rooney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm working through, this is a council appointment here. I caught you off guard because I was moving so quickly.
Yeah, I just... If you have it in front of you. Do you have one solid?
One?
If you have a's. Oh, no, I have it, okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Edgerton to alternate inland wetland citation officer.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Motion by Mr. Rooney is our second. Second by Mr. Condon. Discussion is during.
During the inland wetland meeting held on July 25th, 2018, the Inland Wetlands Commission determined that Elizabeth Edgerton would be acceptable alternate inland wetland citation officer in case of absence or conflict of interest of the regular wetland citation hearing officer. The intent of the IWC recommendation is only to have an alternate hearing officer when the regular meeting officer is unavoidably not available.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on this appointment. All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Rooney. We have no further appointments this evening. We're going to move on to our action items. Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. Is there a report this evening on that committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met, but we will be meeting shortly. We have a lot going on with the space needs and the fire study and things of that nature. So we will probably be meeting, I would guess, within the next three weeks or so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rooney. Moving on to B is the Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works and Parking Recreation Matters. Does anybody have a report from that committee or any subcommittees? Ms. Lepelis is absent, but I don't know if anybody else had anything to report?
No, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. C is the Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Is there a report from that section?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did just meet. Much of what we discussed today will be brought up in tonight's council meeting. And then we're also looking to tackle the blight ordinance and blight definitions and process around blight over the next probably couple of months, if not sooner.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. Moving on to item D, actually, item D, which is the Strategic Planning Committee. Is there a report from that committee?
Strategic planning, hasn't met, but is scheduled to meet over the next two weeks.
Great, thank you, Mr. Condon. Item E is the Planes Building Committee. Do we have a report from that committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting that we canceled due to summer session, and we have some funding and things that we need to discuss, so there was reason to overlook it for the last time. But we will be meeting again in the next two weeks.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Rooney. Action item F is the Fire Services Study Committee. Is there a report from that committee?
Fire Services Study is underway. They're revising the study, and they're going to meet with Strategic Committee as well. So we're going to be in joint.
Thank you, Mr. Condon. And last but not least is item G, which is our first electants update. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I've got some hard copies working their way down. Just a few things I want to talk about tonight. One was the, my Business and Industry Advisory Committee. You've probably seen some, may have seen some press in this regard earlier, but since we have not, the council hasn't been in a while, I just wanted to formally report that there were some recommendations that came out of that committee. Primarily, their initial concerns were over parking and expansion of staff approval and zoning matters. I did four of those comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman. He brought those to the full commission at their last meeting. I was at that meeting. We had some preliminary discussions. But those focus matters have been referred, forwarded and referred to the Planning and Zoning Regulations Subcommittee. I know they met this evening, and it was on their agenda. I was, unfortunately, I had to move to LNA meeting while they were still in discussion, so I'm not sure how far they got. I'm sure they will continue to deliberate on those items. Second was pleased to report that the state of Connecticut has approved all of the six programs that this town has recommended for the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. So I have issued a press release so we can get the word out. All those programs are eligible at a 60% credit level. So any entities that have corporate tax liabilities can apply between September 15th and October 1st through the state of Connecticut. We do have links on the website, and there's links available at the state site as well. So we certainly would encourage that. It's a kind of a win-win for both the business that gets a tax break and the organization that, you know, or the program that receives funding due to that incentive. And last, but certainly not least, as I had, as I had committed to this council of having a further discussions on the concept of the Performance Pavilion, on August 1st, I noticed a public meeting of myself with the Parks and Rec Chairman. That meeting was held last week on the 23rd. We had just over a dozen individuals in attendance, a lot of elected and appointed officials there to speak to issues around project organization, fundraising, oversight, the size and scope of the events, the issues in regards to parking and noise and neighborhood and location of the structure. I'm very happy, I think it was a very healthy discussion on several issues and a lot of issues to consider regarding organization and fundraising. There were no individuals or organizations that came forward during that meeting in regards to that effort. There were a couple of issues that arose regarding, some certain issues that are kind of legal and regulatory questions that I will be referring to legal counsel. But in terms of the overall concept, as I said earlier, I have referred that to the Parks and Rec Commission through their chairman and asked that they deliberate further and provide me some input and recommendations in regards to priorities and the strategic plan for Wolf Park. And that is it for tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Mr. Condon?
I was asked by Councilwoman Lepelis to read something about the park. I read it the other day at the meeting, but now she wanted it read in council for today's meeting about the proposed pavilion. She had five points that she wanted raised. One, parks and recreation should have full control and responsibility for this facility. Two, we would need strict rules on security. What happens if extremist groups wanted to rent the pavilion? How would security be accomplished? Three, events can attract large groups of people. How would parking and transportation be implemented? Four, how would funding be accomplished? And five, the pavilion we now have works very well for the six musical events. And to her knowledge, there have been no problems. Why make a massive new pavilion submitted by any of the others?
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Anything further, Mr. Kelly?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our one item of unfinished business this evening, which is the illicit discharge ordinance, MS 4 compliance. You have a copy of the proposed ordinance as part of your packet. And so basically looking for comments from council this evening. As you may recall, we had reviewed this once prior, giving everybody an opportunity to provide an in-depth review. And it is back on our agenda. It's anticipated that we will call for a public hearing this evening on the ordinance so that we can continue to move this down the road towards approval. So with that, I'm looking forward for questions. Mr. Kellogg, do you want to just provide anything as, that you have in the past?
I could certainly just kind of briefly recap. The intent here is to be in compliant with the state of Connecticut, MS 4 permit process. So to that, it is something that is derived from federal law and regulation through the EPA. But between the EPA and the state of Connecticut, it is essentially an unfunded mandate that we have this ordinance and everything that goes with the MS 4 process. I, this obviously has had extensive review, both by Mr. Schatzlein, our inland wetlands agent, and as well as our land use attorney, Mr. Moreno, who have reviewed this and have endeavored to ensure that we meet the requirements under the federal and state law, but are not, you know, overreaching in any regard. So that is highly modeled after some of them, basically a model ordinance, but we certainly, he's ensured that it's got a Monroe flavor to it, particularly as involves enforcement. You'll see things in there such as the ability to appoint the WPCA as an enforcement, as part of the enforcement processes, which is something that I specifically ask that we look into and have some flexibility there that would make it, that would make it a little bit unique in that regard, but otherwise, we're looking at, we're looking at compliance with the state requirements.
Have there been any amendments to the draft ordinance between the last time that we reviewed it and this evening?
Sure have not.
Any further comments regarding the ordinance? And while we're at that, is there any objection to me calling for a public hearing this evening to move this forward? Just a consensus, no? All right, while we're at it, we typically try to call for public hearings and have those public hearings prior to our regularly scheduled council meetings. Prior to the commencement of the meeting this evening, we did discuss that our next meeting, 10th, which is Rosh Hashanah. And I think I received a consensus from all council members that we didn't feel that it would be appropriate to hold a council meeting on an evening of religious celebration so as not to ensure that we're not precluding anybody from attending and providing comments. So it's our intention to move, adjourn that meeting on September 10th to September 12th, which is a Wednesday. And with that in mind, I'm going to call for a public hearing on 9/12/18 at 7:00 PM. And that gives us a little bit of flexibility should we want to call for a public hearing on some other business that we have later this evening to also occur that evening at, in the 7:30 time slot. All right, so no objection, 7:00 PM for this, for this ordinance. If we move forward with our new business, the other ordinances for the tax relief, that would be 7:30 in the regular meeting, council meeting will be at 8:00. But right now, we have 7:00 public hearing. Mr. Schatzlein?
I don't know if you want me at that public hearing. I think you might. I have it in the line to be at the same time at the same time. So I don't know. I can't be at the same time.
6:30?
7:30.
Perhaps, I don't think it'll take very long for you to present. Maybe inland wetlands can adjourn for 10 or 15 minutes and...
Yeah, okay. I would say too, if at all possible, could it be 7? Then I could maybe move the agenda around at what makes...
Yeah, it is 7, that's what I said.
Oh, it is 7?
7:00.
Yeah, there's a 7 too, so I'll move the agenda around so I can do yours.
Yeah, 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so 7:00 PM it is on September 12th, 2018. Moving on to new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we move to new business, I just want to, for the record, clarify. I do see that Chalk Hill has been moved off of the old unfinished business. I wanted to be sure that that is because of its inclusion and put it straight for the record for people who read the minutes as part of the discussion for, I believe, it's item E, the municipal space needs and the new business.
Correct. The understanding we can hold with Chalk Hill is that since that process is well underway and is, there's an ongoing discussion, there will be an ongoing determination as to the needs and includes Chalk Hill. We actually discussed that at LNA this evening. Mr. Aguilera could bring that up. And so the presumption is we will discuss Chalk Hill moving forward in conjunction with that study.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome.
Moving on to new business. Item A is the fiscal year '15 Emergency Management Performance Grant Resolution. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that the town council may enter into, with, and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management Homeland Security the notice of grant award contract and any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate pertaining to the FY '15 DEMHS Grant Number 015E085A State Homeland Security Grant Program. And be it further resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, as first electant of the town Monroe, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town Monroe and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Maurer. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Condon. And for introduction, I will turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, what we have before you in this regard is really more of a matter of housekeeping. You'll see some correspondence that goes back from 2016. The state of Connecticut is in the process of finalizing their, and closing out, this grant with the federal government. These grants run in arrears quite a bit, which is why they're still working on the fiscal year '15 grant at the state level. Because the federal government is, literally, they work that, that far behind in some of these grant opportunities. The challenge that has arisen is that the state of Connecticut had contacted Monroe to advise that they only had an executed cover page from former selectman Babrich. They did not have the following, I guess it's 30, 30 plus or minus one pages initialed. They require the full set in order to be compliant with the federal government. They did not have anything on file. We were unable to find those additional pages on file in town either, although we do have the cover page that they referenced. So they require a full set executed by me. In order to do that, we need a new resolution from this council to be provided to the state that authorizes me to do that. So we're literally just trying to do some housekeeping so that this grant can be closed out and so that the state will have, can have the funds and disperse the funds accordingly.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Very straightforward. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor and against, that would carry 7 to 0. Just a quick update for council. Ms. Martin just contacted me, told me that her flight is delayed. She doesn't anticipate her being able to make it to council. She just wanted to apologize to the fellow council members that it was their intention to be here, and she apologizes for not being. Moving on to new business. Item B is the DeCarlo and Dahl Municipal Space Needs Assessment Contract. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, for selecting the town Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town Monroe the professional services agreement and any associated documents binding between DeCarlo and Dahl Incorporated for the Municipal Space Needs Assessment.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Reed, second by Mr. Rooney. Again, to introduce the agreement, I'll turn over to Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to acknowledge the Strategic Planning Committee, who was also very much involved in this process. The process involved, as you recall, actually goes back to, it's like when I was on strategic planning with council, we talked about this conceptually. Certainly something I feel very passionate about, that we need to really evaluate the needs of our programs and the needs of our departments from a space perspective and match that up against what we do have available in our existing buildings as well as Chalk Hill. And, and get some professional assessment as well as professional recommendations and how we may create a plan for the future as regards to space goes. So through the SBC, we went through an RFP process. There was certainly significant interest. There were firms that were interviewed by SBC. The outcome of the SBC process was to recommend DeCarlo and Dahl for this, for this agreement. My office then engaged DeCarlo and Dahl, and with the help of our town attorney, we negotiated the agreement that's before you, which is comprised of the cover letter from DeCarlo and Dahl, which really incorporates the scope of work as well as their standard terms and conditions, which is articulated in Schedule A. And then Mr. Attorney Hayden has also drafted a Monroe Terms and Conditions, Schedule B, which takes priority if there are any conflicts anywhere else in the document. You'll see it's laid out in a way similar to the other studies we've done in this regard, where it is a phased approach. We only commit to funding as we want to continue the project and as we think the project is worthy of going from phase one to phase two, et cetera. And it's structured that we do our assessment first prior to getting any conceptual ideas back for how we might solve the issue. And then if we want to go further, we can actually entertain of any solution we may choose to pursue. But it's entirely up to the town as to how far we take it. It's literally a one step at a time approach.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any questions, Mr. Reed?
Not a question, just to state that the state could go through LNA as well. And we had a few questions, and everything seemed to tick in time. It's, I think it's a great, great plan.
Any further comment or discussion?
A great, comprehensive group, I think, out of all the presentations they, they will provide us the best resource for managing our space in town. So we look forward to your study.
Yeah, the only comment I'll make, it was a pleasure being a part of the process through SBC. I just want to commend Mr. Condon and SBC for doing just a fabulous job of vetting the bidders. I think it was a thorough discussion, well thought out, and not an easy decision to make, but, you know, relative to finances as opposed to work product and to really vet that process. But I thought, you know, really good example of just cooperative bipartisan government that really got, what I hope to be a really solid vendor for the town of Monroe. So a good job there. Any further discussion, Mr. Maurer?
I just want to give commendation to our council. The terms and conditions that are, as drafted for Monroe, I think, are extremely thorough and cover a lot of issues that, I think there were some holes before we had the terms and conditions added. So I think you covered which holes were in there. So I just want to give some commendation there because that really did bring the whole agreement together.
I agree. Lawyers don't get enough credit, so thank you, Mr. Maurer.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for all those in favor and against. Motion carries 7 to 0. Moving on to new business. Item C is the 754 Main Street Commercial Tax Abatement Application. As you know, we, prior to tonight's meeting, we had the public hearing. Condition precedent did take place at 7:40 PM. There was no comment from the public, other than a comment from the applicant, Mr. Singlak, who was also present this evening. Before you, you have the application by Mr. Singlak and the recommendations of the committee, the review committee, which recommended an assessment percentage discount of 15% in year one, 10% in year two, and 5% in year three. And LNA then subsequently reviewed the application and essentially endorsed the application, but did not make any specific recommendation as to the percentages. So what we have before us this evening, before I actually call for a, ask for a motion, is I just wanted to have a discussion in advance amongst council. As I said, Mr. Singlak is present for questions of council. And once the discussion, I think, is ready for a vote, I'll ask for a motion, and we'll have formal discussion on the pending motion. But because we've not really considered the actual application or the percentages, what's before us is simply a recommendation. It's up to us to move that forward or not. So we certainly have the authority to make the adjustments on the percentages should we think that it's appropriate one way or the other, approve any such recommendations, or obviously deny the application if it should have passed. So with that, I'm looking forward to discussion of members of council questions. Mr. Kellogg, if you want to say something?
May I just say, I just want to make sure the council's aware that in the package, right behind the application, the, this, the abatement eligibility calculation is going to be clear that that was prepared by our assessor, Mr. Feldman. And then after the minutes, obviously, those are just records from the land records, the building permit to support that, and the engineering design. But I just wanted you to be aware of where those documents are.
And for the record, statutory, it is in the document that Mr. Kellogg referenced, but I think the maximum eligibility is 20%. And that would be three years, is that correct? Yeah, it's 20% max three years, based upon the improvement expenditure. Right, okay.
Right, we are, right, our ordinance is a sliding scale based upon the value difference.
Correct, right. So with that said, any comments, questions, discussion before we call for a motion?
You said 20%.
20, the maximum, our ordinance provides for a maximum of 20%.
Based upon...
Yeah, three years, right, based upon a sliding scale. It has to do with expenditures. The recommendation is 15, 10, 5. And again, the considerations that are taken, that are, that's a terrible sentence, but the considerations that were reviewed basically by both committees were the impact on the community, jobs, business improvements, investment in the community essentially. And so that, that's the threshold. And then from there, the, the review has to do basically as to, you know, subjectively what the committee felt was an appropriate abatement based upon not only this application, but to be honest, considering prior applications that it had recently. So that's what the committee felt was appropriate for this particular, this particular... Mr. Ford? I'm sorry, Mr. Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one idea, I think the committee's assessment is appropriate. One idea of something, because of the fact that the application states that they would like to use the abatement towards improve paving upgrades and displays that haven't begun, I don't know if one we can or if it might be an idea, instead of doing 15, 10, 5, do 20, 10, 0, to allow for some of the money to be abated earlier on in the process to allow for those upgrades. We're not talking about a large amount of money. I don't know how much per difference that would make. Just one idea to possibly allow those upgrades to happen at a faster pace while still having the same approximate effect of an abatement.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. That's exactly the discussion I was hoping to have this evening. So that's good, good discussion. Anybody else?
Is this precedent setting? Or is this sliding scale in mind with what I tried and LNA have recommended?
It's certainly not precedent setting. I can tell you the prior applications, everyone is considered on an individualized basis. So no, I don't, I would not consider this to be precedent setting. I don't think there's, I think every application is independently unique.
Going through the, going through the application, didn't notice or see anything that was, you know, out of place with regards to this typical abatement. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go forward with it.
Anybody else? Anybody else, so is anybody prepared to make a motion as to the percentages that they want council to consider? Again, the recommendation is 15, 10, 5, not binding on council at all. Certainly within our prerogative to do what we think is appropriate. Mr. Maurer suggested one alternative. There are any other suggestions before we ask for a motion, for a motion?
Well, the only reason I would maybe ask us to second reconsider adjusting it is the work that was done with the various committees and LNA and so on and so forth. So we're sitting up here potentially looking at juggling these numbers here at the last moment. I'm not sure that that should override with the previous work that's already taken place.
Fair enough. Mr. Mauer?
And I don't disagree with that sentiment. Like I was stating before, we're simply, we're not talking about huge numbers. I don't think it would make a huge difference either way. And if council is more inclined to go with the initial percentages as proposed, I would certainly have no objection to that and would certainly be in favor of that vote as well.
I would say, if it doesn't make that much of a difference, that we should probably take the recommendation of the committees and such and town planners have already dictated.
Presented to those committees here. So, if it's going to make any difference, if you want to speak to, whether the percentages make any difference or you're in mind with what we originally presented.
So, for the record, the applicant doesn't seek certain percentages. Of course, I can speak for Mr. Singlak. He's, his application, I think, inherently is seeking the maximum that he possibly can get from us. So, and he certainly, you know, humbly suggested that to us as, you know, both in the public hearing and at the meetings, that he would appreciate any help that the town is willing to give him for his investment in that committee. So, Mr. Singlak, do you want to say anything at this time?
I wish I would have looked at these numbers a little earlier in the process. So, when we met separately, I probably would have pushed. Obviously, I know for the max, but I did like Mr. Mauer's idea because if you stop by the place right now and you see live, we are building displays as we're going. This is the one that would be going out. It's not a huge difference, so if you guys didn't change it, I want you to say. But if you did change it, yes, it would go a long way. In the second year in the building, it's as tight as any dollar we get in or going right into the building. And if it makes people feel comfortable and stop by, they can see it's going right into it. That's all I'll say.
Mr. Chairman, with that being said, with regards to the applicant's testimony here regarding the splits, I would be open to reconsidering, recalculating the splits.
Mr. Mauer, any motion at this time?
I would move to approve the application on a sliding scale basis of an abatement of 20% year one, 10% year two, 0% year three.
Motion by Mr. Mauer, is there a second? Second by Mr. Condon. Discussion regarding the motion before council. Mr. Ford?
As mentioned, based on the testimony we just received from the applicant, I agree we should go forward with that revised display.
Anybody else? I'll just mention, I want to thank Mr. Singlak for his application. Very professional throughout. In my years, I want to say many, and I can probably say that this evening because Ms. LaPella's and Ms. Martin aren't here. So, in my many years of being on council, as the senior person up here now, I've seen many applications, yours was very professional. You are very forthcoming, very humble application. So, I appreciate you being in community, making investment in Monroe. I want to thank you for that. And I hope that everybody certainly patronizes your store as much as possible. With that said, any further discussion? But I would certainly support Mr. Mauer's tweak to the recommendation. I think it's appropriate and I think it's rewarding to individuals who come to the community and invest in our community. With that said, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Against, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Singlak. Congratulations.
Welcome to Monroe.
Who are you voting?
Less than a year now. We'll come back and listen to you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Item D is the tie-in bond agreement for the Engineering Services Outfall MS-4 Screening. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Resolve that Kenneth M. Callog, for selecting the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Engineering Services Outfall Screening Services Agreement and any associated documents binding between tie-in bond for the services to support MS-4 compliance. Question by Mr. Condon, is there a second? Second by Mr. Mauer. For discussion purposes, I'll take it over to you, Mr. Callog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, from the ongoing discussions we have regarding MS-4 compliance, the next piece of the puzzle is to ensure that we are conducting the required outfall screening that must be done as part of that permit. We had a process that this, that actually was the prior council had reviewed in terms of selecting tie-in bond for all these services. Mr. Schatzlein has worked with them to come up with an agreement that has been reviewed by our town attorney. So, this will be the next phase to ensure we maintain compliance with MS-4. And so, Mr. Schatzlein is available if you have any questions as regards to the technical requirements that we must accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Callog. Any further discussion regarding this motion? Seeing now the call for a vote, all those in favor? And against, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Callog. Moving on to item E, transfer funds regarding the municipal space needs assessment. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Be it resolved that the following transfer from the general fund, assigned fund balance, Chalk Hill Study to the Capital Reserve Fund be approved for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, from account number 1001-134003 to the fund account titled General Fund Assigned Fund Balance Chalk Hill, Chalk Hill Study. $100,000 from that fund transferred to account number 23001-140999, Capital Reserve Fund Operating Transfers in. And the description is to transfer $100,000 from the general fund assigned fund balance for a Chalk Hill Study to the Capital Reserve Fund Operating Transfers in. The intention of this transfer is to fund the majority of the municipal space needs assessment, which will include the Chalk Hill Building. And further, be it further resolved that the following transfer from the Capital Reserve Fund Assigned Fund Balance to the Capital Reserve Fund Committed Fund Balance Municipal Space Needs Assessment be approved for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, from account number 2300-134010, Capital Reserve Fund Assigned Fund Balance 105,002, account number 2300-134999, Capital Reserve Fund Committed Fund Balance for the Municipal Space Needs Assessment. Description to transfer and commit $105,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund Assigned Fund Balance to the Capital Reserve Fund Committed Fund Balance for the Municipal Space Needs Assessment.
How do you make that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Condon. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mauer. Discussion, I don't know, Mr. Callog, if you want to say anything? It's obviously something...
It's pretty straightforward. So, there was funds that were earmarked in the past for municipal study related to Chalk Hill. And there was certainly several discussions anodally with Board of Finance about that being utilized for the municipal space needs assessment. Now, with that, we have that contract as we all discussed tonight. We know the exact amount. So, the purpose here is to, is the technical and logistical transfer of the funds into the municipal spaces assessment, rather than just simply adding the $5,000 that we were short through the work of our finance director. He appropriately identified that we should, you know, transfer the 100,000 out and then transfer the 105,000 back in. And we committed, just to be clear, since the prior title of that assigned fund balance was Chalk Hill, and we want it to be slightly broader. So, we want to make sure that there's no confusion in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Callog. Any further discussion, Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was discussed at our finance meeting. The finance, our Board of Finance felt that this was not only an appropriate transfer, but the appropriate way of doing it with transferring one out and one in. And there was clarification there that I just want to make for the record. The selectmen did a good job of explaining it, that this is an additional $5,000, not an additional 105,000. That the amount that had been set aside for Chalk Hill, we are utilizing that 100,000 plus another 5,000 as for the whole needs assessment.
Thank you. As Mr. Mauer stated, the condition precedent was that, is that this be approved by the Board of Finance. And it was approved on Monday, August 20th, 2018. I think that there'd be... Any further discussion? All right, seeing now the call for a vote, all those in favor? And against, that motion carries seven to zero. So, our last two items of business this evening were intentionally last because we wanted to keep this Squibb family hostage for all of our wonderful business. But for discussion, I'm assuming we're going to take F and G together. And I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Callog for a discussion regarding these two ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to, before I begin, acknowledge the hard work of two individuals that assisted me in this endeavor. One is our assessor, Mr. Feldman. Justin was very helpful in all aspects of this. And I extend him a lot of thanks for helping out in this project. But I want somewhat unusual component of tonight's discussion is I am very proud to introduce a Massacre High School student, Mr. Aaron, sorry, Squibb. Aaron was looking for a capstone project, and it was humbled that he asked me to be his mentor in that regard. There were some things that I had been looking at and wanted to tackle in regards to veterans' tax relief. And I thought that was a good project for him to take on because it required some research, but also could be, kind of, help him kind of go through the system of how things work in local government and see kind of the whole palette of bringing an ordinance to fruition. So, in that regard, we're going to tag-team our presentation here tonight. It's pretty straightforward and simple, so it was only 103 slides.
Including the title slide?
We sign off on the capstone afterwards?
Your initial every day?
I'm sorry. You know, we probably should. So, Aaron, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
I'm Aaron Squibb of 31 Hunter Ridge Road in Monroe.
So, there's two things we're going to talk about tonight. One is our base veterans' tax relief program. And the second is the Gold Star program. The first, we'll talk about the base program. And there's some nuances that are here. But we haven't actually looked at this ordinance since 2003. So, we felt it was ripe for review. And Aaron, if you want to talk a little bit about what we researched in that regard?
So, what we researched is the current program in Monroe and how it compares to the similar program in other neighboring towns around us. And what we found is that Monroe is actually significantly lower in terms of what we offer as an exemption for veterans than our neighboring communities of such a new town, Oxford, Shelton, and places like that. So, what we, what I've worked on and what we propose is increasing the exemption Monroe already currently offers to veterans, while also implementing a new program that the state introduced called the Gold Star Relief Program, which in short, offers tax relief to the families of a veteran who was killed or has gone missing in action. Some towns of similar size that have already adopted this program are Milford, Milltown, Wilton, and Durham. And just for, just so you know, Durham is the town of which we based our ordinance off of.
So, the, I'll just jump real quick. So, we'll talk a little bit off the first thing in a minute. But one thing to know on the Gold Star program is this just became a law recently. It was effective with the last grant list. So, we would be, you know, obviously, a few towns have jumped on it immediately, but we would be right there behind them. I want to really acknowledge Mr. Feldman for recognizing that this option even existed. It was something that I was focused on the first program, wanted to dig into that. And Mr. Feldman recognized, hey, there's another thing that we need to, that we can explore. And it's just, it sounds like an excellent way to pay tribute to a family that's made an ultimate sacrifice. So, as Aaron mentioned, we did some analysis with neighboring towns. And the first thing I want to talk about, and I'll let Aaron talk further, is that you'll see that the, there's two different concepts. One is the state benefit, where there are no income limitations at all. And then, there is another section where there are income limitations, which involves state benefits, local benefits, which then get to your total. The no, the no income limit at the state level, you'll see that Monroe is kind of at a lower amount, a $1,500 limit. That was the original base amount that was originally in statute. What Mr. Feldman's research indicated was that there was a law that was passed... How long ago was that? In the 80s, I think you said?
1980.
That required, mandated that benefits double whenever your grant list doubles. Although Monroe's grant list has doubled and almost tripled over a period of time, the state law, the timing was which that we, this program was not affected by that. So, the law was passed after our grant list increased. So, other communities have had that 1,500 double and then double again. So, you'll see other communities that had, enjoy a richer overall benefit when you get to the income limitation section, where we actually have a local option. So, if you want to talk about the different local options that you found there and how that plays out, and then the overall, how that plays in the overall picture?
Yeah, so if you look at our local option combined with the state option, Monroe offers $8,000, 2,000 of which is reimbursed by the state. This is $8,000 off of the assessed property tax value. So, what we wanted to do to kind of, not compete, but I guess compete with towns of similar size, because our grant list or our no income limit hasn't doubled, what we propose on doing is increasing the local option by 2,000 off the assessed value, making it 7,000, making the local option $7,000, increasing the total to 10,000, which would put us kind of in the range of some of the towns around us and neighboring communities.
So, that increase of $2,000 of assessed value would currently affect about 100 veterans that are currently in the program? And then, you want to talk about our recommendation in terms of implementing the Gold Star families and what that exemption would be and translate to?
Yeah, so I researched the Gold Star program. And I was trying to figure out how many families in Monroe would this implementation of this program actually affect. And it's very hard to judge because most, most families aren't forthcoming with this information. It's more of a private matter. There's some databases we looked at. But in total, based on other towns, how many people they have registered on their programs? We assume that the most Monroe would have at any given time, claiming the Gold Star exemption would be three families. So, similar towns such as Wilton and Durham have two families currently on their program. So, what that equates to in a dollar amount is $700 per family. So, anywhere from $1,400 to $2,100 affected towards the town budget.
And again, just for another point, you'll see in the proposed ordinances that you have before you, that as per state statute, the Gold Star family program does also have an income limitation threshold. That's derived by the current statutory income limits that are set under the Circuit Breaker, the Circuit Breaker program that's available to elderly and totally disabled. It's those income limits plus $25,000. So, there's a little bit more leeway, but there's still some income limitations. I want to make note that Aaron and I and Justin did attend the Board of Finance meeting to run this proposal by them, as obviously relates to their mill rate calculation. They had no concerns based upon the relative dollar amounts we're talking about. They had no concerns and they gave us a consensus to proceed. They were actually very, I would say, they felt strongly that this was something we should pursue, that it was a relatively small amount to consider given the, given the individuals that we are honoring. So, again, this is the earlier sheet, looking at total, total benefit currently of $8,000, which we would then increase to $10,000. And again, the total exposure for both ordinances is expected to be less than $10,000. The calculation, again, based upon expanding the first program, assuming the 107 current individuals on that program, equates out to just over $7,500. And as Aaron mentioned earlier, assuming three on the Gold Star program, with just over two grand, again, comes at just under $10,000 if our assumptions are accurate.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Callog and Mr. Squibb. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Any conversations with the VFW? I know it's hard to get Gold Star families to come forward, but...
No, we did, we did have some ad hoc conversations with veterans, with American Legion members. I had had conversations with veterans who have approached me as constituents to talk about this, understand, you know, the nuances of what the state program allows without income limits versus this, and explain that we're trying to expand benefits, those benefits that are within our local... that are within our local control and authority.
Does the, Mr. Mallor, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as the selectman mentioned, this was discussed at finance. Finance felt strongly, and I agree with them, that this is something that we should strongly consider and they recommended moving forward with a unanimous consensus. And it's one of those opportunities as a councilman when you're not looking at what's going to save the town the most money, you're looking at what's right to do for the town and for the people of the town. And this is one of those items that is, in, in my opinion, something that's an honor to be able to vote on, an honor to be able to vote for, to support the people of our town who have served our town, our state, our country, both here and overseas.
Mr. Mallor, anybody else?
More of a closing comment.
Okay, I have a question. I didn't look at the public act. Does it limit the credit for the Gold Star only to spouse and parents and not children?
Correct. Surviving spouse and surviving parents.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reed?
No, I just want to say this, this young man's very impressive. Mr. Squibb did a great job with this. He's, he's definitely an example of why Massach is one of the top, top schools in the state of Connecticut. Excellent job. Not easy to go up there as a, an adult, let alone a 16, 17, 18-year-old kid, you know, it's very impressive.
I agree. I agree.
I echo those comments. He's been a pleasure to work with and he hasn't shied away from getting, you know, rolling up his sleeves and parking himself in room 204 all plowing through research and stuff like that, so.
It's not over yet though, Mr. Squibb.
That's right.
You got a long, you got a long road to go here, so.
That's right.
Got to keep up, keep up the good work.
The rate we're going though, you know, he's, if he presents in October, he could be done. The rate we're going. I want to just thank the council for, or the comments to, at this point for endorsing and supporting our recommendation. I appreciate it.
So with that, any further discussion? So with that, I'm going to, I just ask for a quick consensus to call for a public hearing independently on each of these proposed ordinances. So first, we have the relief for veterans and surviving spouses. Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Consensus, yes? All right. And second to the Gold Star, which is proposed Article 10, consensus? Okay, so with that said, I'm going to call for a public hearing regarding chapter 470, proposed Article 7, relief for veterans and surviving spouses. I'm going to keep them separate just for housekeeping purposes, so 7:30 PM on that one, and I'll call for a public hearing. 470, proposed Article 10, which is the Gold Star exemption at 7:45 and certainly can discuss that presentation loss together, but get an opportunity for comments separately. There is no further business. I just want to, Madam, if you could just highlight the consensus of council to adjourn and move that, our next meeting, so that does take place in the notes, the minutes show that we did move that meeting on a consensus vote, 9/12/18, will be the next meeting and we will certainly post the adjournment of the regularly scheduled meeting. It'll be a special meeting on 9/12. Second public participation, would anybody like to participate? The second public participation? All right, seeing now closed, second public participation, motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Rooney, second. Mr. Condon, all those in favor? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good day, thank you.
See you guys on the 12.